Crystal is ready. Okay, very good. I'll bring this session, March 19th, to the Salina City Planning Commission to order, and it is a long agenda, gentlemen. To the commissioners, I'd ask you to please try to avoid from digressions. Sometimes we can get into just doing some personal learning and spend a lot of time, and we need to keep the agenda moving forward. And if the staff would keep their remarks to what's appropriate for the record, we don't, we all have the agendas in front of us and a great deal of information that we reviewed, so I don't know that we need to have every bit of the background read into the file. Our first order of business today is approval of the summary minutes of March 5th. Are there comments on the minutes or a motion to approve?
It's been moved in second at all. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Thank you. We'll move on to the public hearing items. Number 2A is the application Z-13-1 filed by Beaverley Architects on behalf of Storage Mart LLC. Staff report?
Mr. Chairman, we have applications 2A and 2B. They're going to blend together, but we'll advise you that what we have for 2B is not yet in the form of what we would consider to be a final plat, so we're going to discuss the development concept and the requested zoning, and then you can act in response appropriately. The first item, 2A, is a public hearing to consider an application filed by Storage Mart LLC, and they are requesting a property that is abandoned railroad right-of-way on the north side of Schilling Road between Centennial Road and Foxborough Drive be re, not rezoned, but zoned, because it's not zoned at all at this time. And so what we're talking about is this strip of rail right-of-way. It's sandwiched between unzoned city flood control right-of-way right here and I-2 zone property owned by the Salina Airport Authority on the west. And so Storage Mart LLC is in the process of acquiring quite clear title to this section. They have filed a quiet title action in Saline County District Court. Only one brief sidebar, and that is that in order for an owner to obtain title to an abandoned railway, there's two ways to do it. One is to do it by a deed from the railroad. The other way is the hard way of initiating a quiet title action in court and asking a judge to award title to you superior to everyone else's. So that is what Storage Mart LLC has done. They're about nine-tenths of the way through the process, and they want to make this a developable strip of property, and they're requesting I-2 zoning. Their plan, as we understand it, is to construct some storage buildings along here primarily towards the west side of that parcel, and they believe that I-2 zoning most closely fits what they're trying to do. It's also the zoning of the property directly to the west owned by the airport authority. There is a small creek channel that runs through here and a line of trees. Airport authority property is on the other side. If we look at the character and the surrounding area, we have the flood control levee you can see here. You have the Foxborough Mini Storage Facility here, West Star Substation, and then closer to the corner, you have the Luminous Nihon shop that's at the corner of Foxborough Drive and Schilling Road. To the north of that is farm ground that is owned by the Brown family. So if you look at this as a potential development site, then you've got a buffer on the east with the flood control levee, and you have somewhat of a buffer on the west with the tree line and the creek channel. The principal tenant on the airport authority property is Salina Auto Auction. Public facilities and services, well, to go back, this is a case where clearly the applicant believes that the fact that this property has no zoning designation at all is a detriment or obstacle to it being developed. So the first question for you today is to determine whether you think this property is suitable for development. That would go a long ways towards deciding if and what it should be zoned. So the, one of the major considerations here is there is no available nearby sewer service. There is a water line, and it is way to the far, far north end, about 1,400 feet north of Schilling Road. There is no water line in Schilling Road. The only thing in order to build buildings on this property that is needed is water for fire protection, especially if you're doing non-climatized storage. The challenge is that our water line is way up here, and if we have buildings way down here, there's going to be a need for an extension of water mains coming down here to provide that fire tech protection. You can't come from south to north because there is no water in, in that location. So as far as public utilities and services, this property is not well situated. The only thing it really could support would be the non-climatized storage that we have described. Schilling Road is an arterial street. It has 6,200 cars a day in this location. The only access into this property would be at Schilling Road and then going to the north. Point out two things about the land use plan. One, and I don't know if you have the future land use map, John. Future land use map shows this as an extension of the airport employment area that we have discussed at other meetings, but this would be Schilling Road here, and the abandoned rail line is here. All this purple area is industrial or employment area associated with the airport. The other thing, John, if you could go to the bicycle route map, and we want to explain very, very carefully, under advice from the city attorney and also just general property law, is the, as part of the comprehensive plan, there was a concept shown for converting that rail line into a future bike hike trail or linear park through a rails-to-trails corridor. There's a couple of issues associated with that is that, first of all, the city doesn't have any kind of rails-to-trails program, and even if we did, it would be illegal for us to reserve that for public use without compensating the owners. So that would be a taking, and the fact that there's this concept out there, perhaps having a, a linear park or trail, there cannot be a reason for not approving this. There may be other reasons why you don't think this property is suitable for development, but it cannot be because of that trail corridor, because that is simply a concept, and there's no, nothing, no formal plan or acquisition practice or anything going on. That would have to be negotiated with the property owners with compensation. So the possible findings you can make here is that although this is former rail right-of-way, it does meet the minimum dimensional requirements for an I-2 lot. It does have public street access. It is adjacent to existing I-2 zoning on the west, and it's buffered by a levee on the east. The property owner is committed to extending public improvements needed to provide fire protection necessary to make this property a buildable lot, or at least item three there is the entire basis for why we are here today, because if there is no willingness or commitment to do that, then this will remain undevelopable. The property is shown as part of the airport employment area, and this section of former rail right-of-way is already under private ownership. It is not eligible for rail banking or anything, and it's, it's not likely to become part of a future linear park or bike trail, and it's simply not a legal basis for not allowing this property to be developed. So we'll start going back to the first question, and the first question is whether the property owner is committed and understands the need to make public improvements to serve the proposed development. It will be somewhat costly to extend water lines the distance necessary to provide fire protection on a lot that is a quarter of mile in length. If the applicant makes that commitment to you, to your satisfaction, then zoning this I-2 would be compatible with the zoning and uses of neighboring properties to the west, but not to the neighboring properties to the east. So you can see here that we have a planned development district. This is predominantly residential, and then a buffer here, a step down between the residential and the I-2 here, and so we have C-5, C-5, C-5. And as we have discussed at length, the distinction between C-5 and I-2 is that C-5 requires that your driveways, driving aisles, parking be paved, also requires some efforts towards front yard landscaping, whereas I-2 does not. So this is a public hearing on whether this should be zoned, and if so, whether it should be zoned I-2 for, allow for development, and so we'd stand for any questions about the zoning aspect. I'll jump into the plat real quick. John, if you just want to put the survey up. This is a survey of the property. It's what it looks like dimension-wise in relation to the adjoining lots. This is the mini storage, the substation, and then property owned by Luminous Neon. These are the airport authority lots. This is a drainage easement, or actually, this is the rail right-of-way here, and the flood control right-of-way here. So you can see that it's 100 feet wide and 1,500 feet deep, and we would explain that they do need to turn this into a platted lot to make it buildable. The planning commission has previously taken a position that if you're going to try to convert rail right-of-way to developable property, it is best to do it through the plating process, because someone can have a piece of property that's, ends up landlocked or no utilities, and is simply unbuildable. So going through the plating process at least requires the utility aspect to be addressed. So what you're being asked to zone is 100 foot wide, 1,577 feet deep. We've pointed out that a typical residential or commercial lot might have a two-to-one or three-to-one depth-to-width ratio. So if I have a 60-foot wide lot, it's 120 feet deep, that's a two-to-one ratio. That's pretty normal. This is a 15-to-one ratio, so it's quite long and narrow. Our question's about the water extensions or whether it's financially feasible for the applicant. They will not need sewer, and because of the non-climatized storage, and they will have electricity, but West Star has overhead lines in the vicinity, and it does not appear that they would need natural gas. The, one thing about this being a survey and converting it to a plat is that the plat would establish the right-of-way for Schilling Road. It would provide an easement, if necessary, for a city sewer force main. There's a water line that comes across here, and an easement is needed for that, and West Star has an electric line that they are requesting an easement for as well. So we are talking about, at this point, a drawing that's in the concept stage. We would still need a drainage analysis. We'd still need a water line extension plan. We'd still need utility easement shown. So as far as the plat item, 2B, we would recommend postpone action on that until a plat package is submitted, but that does not prevent you from discussing the, whether this should be zoned and if I-2 is the appropriate zoning. So with that, I'll address any questions about the layout of the property or I-2 zoning. I know we have members of the public who may wish to speak. I believe Troy Vansel is here representing the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions of the staff?
With the levee on one side and the creek on the other, or the drainage way on the other, what is the current floodplain status? Is it a floodway?
This, this area is not in a floodplain at all.
Hmm.
There is no floodplain associated with that channel. There is a floodplain associated over here, and this levee, primarily this, this part here and here, does get credit for protecting this area, and so none of this housing area is in a 100-year floodplain. If those levees weren't there, it would be, but none of this area along this channel right here is floodplain till you get north of Magnolia Road.
Okay.
However, that is a good point, that with the levee here, the drainage has to go to the west.
And it didn't flood in 2007 when the airport administration?
This channel did, did have flooding in 2007 when that, because that's where the water goes.
That's what I thought.
The water that comes from the airport runway and the administration building goes, runs to the east, then it goes under Centennial Road and makes a right turn and goes north and comes right up here.
But it's not a floodplain.
So there has been flooding, but it's not in a mapped floodplain.
Other questions for staff? May we hear from the applicant? Mr. Vansel, if you would state your name and address for our secretary.
My name's Troy Vansel, 853 Navajo. I'm kind of the short, do the short straw. The owner and the architect are both out of town, so I'm probably going to be a little bit limited in what questions I can answer, but I'll do my best. I'm the general contractor for it, so I'm usually a little bit further down the road when I get involved with these.
Are you comfortable with the staff's recommendations for this property?
Yeah, yeah, and I know, I've, I've talked to Dave Beaverley last night. They've talked to the fire marshal about the requirements for the water main, and they feel like they can meet all those. So I don't think that's going to be an issue.
Then you're comfortable, or the owners are comfortable with us postponing part two of this, to wait for the site plan?
Yeah, because, I mean, to start doing drainages and all that, you really need to know, do we have a piece of property that's developable? I think that's the big question they're looking for, and then, yeah, they're willing to go forward and do the rest of that.
Questions of Mr. Vansel?
Troy, you may not know, but I assume they're not interested in C-5 simply because of the paving requirement, or is that just an assumption on my part that's not true?
Well, I, I, I can see, you got I-2 right next to it, and I can see where the compatibility, but the other thing is, like, you start doing the C-5 with the landscaping, then all of a sudden, maybe that water main cost doesn't become, you're just adding more and more to the cost of something that's very limited, and obviously, what it can even be, you know, even if they didn't come here, it's very limited what can be put in there. And so I think that's the main concerns.
What if the landscaping was just on the short side there along Schilling?
Yeah, I, I don't think it's so much the landscaping. I think it's getting into the paving. And again, I haven't been part of these discussions with, with Dave Beaverley, but I, I can see where landscaping wouldn't, you're talking 100-foot-long stretch or something like that, but when you get into C-5, it's not just landscaping.
Thank you very much. We could hear from the public at this time. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this? We have one coming, and you can be next, sir. And if you would, two, please state your name and address for our secretary.
Good afternoon. I'm Jim Brown. My address is 2785 West State Street Road, and I represent the legal owner of the landlocked ground, which consists of about 56 acres to the north of Storage Mart LLC. So far, we have had just a gentleman's agreement between Storage Mart LLC, Marty Simpson, and some other people that are involved with that. We do need to get some kind of an agreement written down on paper. We have, through our attorney, acquired a warranty deed to the railroad right-of-way, which is also on our property on the west side of that 56 acres. We do have a gentleman's agreement at the present time, like I said, between Marty Simpson and Storage Mart LLC, but we need to have some kind of more permanent access to that 56 acres. We have come before several people on the planning commission or planning board. Martha Tasker, for one, has been trying to help us find a, access to our property. Right now, we are going down a concrete-paved street and jumping that flood levee dike with our equipment. We need a, at least a 30-foot entrance and exit to that property, which Marty has assured us that we will get, but again, we do not have, have that written down. We have to have 30 feet coming in off of Schilling Road, and then we also have to have a 30-foot gate or something at the north end of his property so we can enter and exit onto our property. So, thank you. We have a tenant farmer here that is also, I don't, do you want to say anything? But anyway, Paul Snyder is our tenant farmer, and he's the one that has to have the 30-foot entrance to that property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Just by way of clarification, again, this levee comes around here, and it comes around the edge here, and at one time, the farmer used to come through this vacant field before it was Storage Mart, and then when Storage Mart was built there, the city is not of a mind that it's a good thing to have the farm equipment driving over the levee. There's not a real crossing on the levee itself, so what they're trying to obtain is the right for their tenant farmer to get from Schilling Road here, drive up this corridor, and get to this property. But if the city were to approve a plan that allowed a building to be 10 foot from that property line, then we're not going to have a 30-foot access aisle. If we approve a plan that has a 10-foot wide gate, you're not going to get a piece of agricultural equipment through that 10-foot gate. So we do appreciate the Browns bringing their concerns about access to our attention.
Does Foxborough not go all the way through?
Foxborough goes up and turns into a cul-de-sac right here, and between the end of the cul-de-sac, there's a, the levee right here that you have to go across in order to get into the Browns' property. So this property up here is owned by Comco or the Marietta family, and then the Browns have this, which is landlocked over here, landlocked here by the levee, landlocked over here by the creek, and then there's no access from the north either.
Could Mr. Simpson easily adjust his buildings to where the Browns have access on, off their property onto Foxborough?
Yes, we are hopeful, when they develop their plat and their water line extension plan, that it'll get a little more fleshed out for us and for you to see where the buildings are proposed. It's my understanding that the buildings would be shoved over towards the west side, more so on the prop, on the 100-foot strip, which would allow for a 20-foot easement for water lines, the overhead power lines, and hopefully, an easement that would allow for a 30-foot access aisle. They're going to need a 20-foot aisle there just for fire department access, but a piece of agricultural equipment needs more width even than a fire truck. There's no requirement that the Foxborough Mini Storage grant that right to the Browns, but we thought it was important, if there was such an agreement, we didn't want to do something that would conflict with that agreement.
Dean, is there, there's no possible way of having access to the, Mr. Brown's property from the west, from Centennial Road?
Well, you'd have to get across that creek right here, which is a difficult proposition, and then, even though the rail tracks are abandoned, there's, there's still quite a crown and everything there. There's not a good way to get a road across through there. It's pretty rugged terrain.
Wow. And the track still runs along the side, the west side of the Brown property?
You, you have to get up here a little farther, opposite the Smoky Hill property, where the, the tracks still come south, but they stop about right here. But all along the Browns' property here and here, the track's been removed. It's our understanding that Blick's Fertilizer, which is right here, they still use that rail line for things going in and out of their facility. That, that's the only user on that line. They have a little spur that comes off right here, and they are served off of that, and then you get about right here to there, the tracks are gone.
Are there others from the public that want to address this issue? Yes, sir. And your name and address, please.
I'm Merle Sellers. I'm chairman of Luminous Neon. And several years ago, when the Storage Mart was trying to obtain this property, we were solicited to support their request, and at that time, they were going to make this an access road so that they could go in Foxborough, out their property, and back to Centennial without having to turn everybody around. Now, obviously, it's a project to make money. Our biggest concern is, we have a problem being on the south end with homeless people. I don't know whether you know it or not, but in the summer, there's a lot of homeless people that stay in those trees just to the west of this property. And I understand, if you zone this I-2, that they are planning on open storage for boats or motorhomes or something, and I see us creating nothing but a public nuisance. We have to keep our office locked when the service people are gone, because we have people around there all the time, and the women are quite frightened. And I think that's a concern that we ought to really look at in this issue. Now, if we could fence this area, I don't see as near as big a problem, but you've only got 100 foot wide. You're going to have to have access down there. But if you've got open storage, I think those people that are now living in the trees are going to live in the, you've built them a permanent home. So that's a concern we have. The other thing is, it's not going to be paved, and it's going to be a dirty mess. And we're all C-5. We have to keep our properties up. We have to be landscaped, and I think, I know the airport's I-2, but this isn't the airport property. Thank you very much. I'll answer any questions you might have.
One thing, I, Mr. Beaverley's office is right next to mine, and I talked to Mr. Beaverley this morning. One thing they're going to do is to remove all those trees, and that way, hopefully, get rid of the homeless people that are sitting there. Then they would go to great lengths to make sure that they did not interfere or impede on your property at all.
Well, they do now.
Well, they do now, but you know, this, I think, because of what they're wanting to do, I think all this will change, according to what I was, had conversation about this morning. And the dirt thing, I, I would think they'd put some kind of a mix in there, or they could cut down the dirt problem, but of course, I don't think you'd have that much traffic in there all the time, anyway, but...
Well, even in I-2, it would have to be asphalt millings or some gravel surface. It could not, it could not be just dirt, whatever you drive on. If it was not paved, it would have to have asphalt millings and, or gravel, and it would have to be of a sufficient depth and structure to support the weight of a fire truck.
Right. But if I understand right, I-2 does not require fencing of this type of storage.
And that is something that we may want to ask Mr. Vansel about, if, or whether he knows about, if there are plans that this would be fenced. I, I've heard reference to a fence and gate, but it's not clear to me whether they would, would be running a fence up of this side or this side, just what extent of this would be actually fenced in, because if you're talking about gates, that implies that you have a, a fence that you have to have a gate for. So we might want to ask Mr. Vansel what he knows about any plans for fencing.
Well, I think fencing would really help our homeless problem considerably, so that would be a consideration. Help.
I can see where the... I can see where the, removing the trees would help the homeless problem, but wouldn't that increase the dust issue? Don't the tree, Kansas winds blowing out there all the time?
Oh, I don't think that's, not a big deal, that it'll grow up to some kind of weed. But, and I don't know which way they're going to face these storage things. That would be important to us, too. If we had the solid side to us, that would be advantageous. I'm not against the proposal, but I've got a lot of questions about how it's going to affect us.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address the commission from the public? And your name, Mr. Schneider, and an address for the secretary.
Paul Schneider. Paul, if you don't mind, pull the little microphone closer so that we can get you on the tape. Thank you.
I live at fifty forty-nine West Crawford. I've farmed this place for the Browns for many, many years, and I've fought and fought trying to get into that property. The storage units that are presently there, that's, we went down the paved road to where the cul-de-sac is, and then we veered off to the left, because there was actually an entrance there, and that's where we, I just took the combine and equipment over the dike, and it didn't hurt it one bit. But anyway, that's how we've been getting in and out, and it's kind of a, it's, that place is landlocked right now. So, they built all that, and then I have no way of getting in. They took the trees out, but before they did, I drove in from the south, and I went right along where the dike was, and it was kind of a bear, because there was trees in the way. So, I stopped, and I trimmed those trees one day, just so I could get through. My question, I'm not against it, I'm just a farmer. I don't own the ground, but I'd like to get my crop out. The thing is, I'm not opposed to it. In fact, I think it's a good deal they cleaned that up, because it was a mess back in there. People would go and throw their trash back in there. So, my question is, if there's a fence put up on the easement on the south side, when you have a drill and a tractor, as big as they are nowadays, I have forty feet, I want to be off that road because of traffic. If I'm driving on that road and pull into that approach, I've got to have my whole unit off of that, off of the road. So, my question is, if there's going to be a fence of some sort, and then you have requirements of landscaping, are you, I've got to have enough to where there's a setback where the fence starts. I do not know the requirements to that.
That'd be my question.
But you've got to have, you've got to start your fence to where you could get a vehicle, a semi, and I don't have a long one, it's a short one. In fact, it's shorter together than what the tractor and drill are. So, that's, and then you'd have to have a, some kind of a gate on the other side, if there's a fence surrounding it. I'm not worried about that. It's getting into the approach with landscaping and so forth, and I think it's great that it's cleaned up, I really do, because I've been up and down that for many, many years, and, like I said, people throw their trash there, and it's cleaned up, and it looks pretty good. And I'd have to agree with the gentleman, you'd have to have some, either concrete or some kind of rock down to support trucks. I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Schneider? Thank you very much, sir. Are there other comments from the public? Troy, would you like to address this fencing issue?
Yeah, let me see, Dean may have a little bit more insight to this. My indication is, it's going to be an open-faced storage unit. It's going to have the backside, which I believe is on the west side. They were talking about having it all the way through, and then two sides that's open. Dean, they're talking about for like motor homes, boats, that type of storage.
Right, almost like a pole barn type design.
Yeah, and I think if you're going to get anybody to rent those, you're going to have to have it fenced in. Somebody's not going to put a hundred thousand dollar motor coach in there with no fencing to keep people from wandering in and out. The other thing is, as far as access coming through here, when I talked to Dave Beverley, they are in the process, like the airport authority, to ask for a, to be able to build up to the property line on the west side. They're trying to shove this as far back to the west as they can. So, if it's a forty-foot building, you should have a sixty-foot wide pathway all the way through there. So, they're trying to keep that back as far as they can to allow for people to come in there. I think the other thing, and I know people have questions, it's kind of hard for them to get into too much. Architects aren't necessarily the cheapest people out there when you're trying to design something, and again, they don't have the zoning, and so I think they're willing to listen. I think the fact that Marty's been talking to Mr. Brown shows that willingness, that they're trying to make all the neighbors happy and do what they can to be a good neighbor and keep things cleaned up. So, that's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. Are there other, other comment from the public? I'll bring this back to the commission for discussion. Gentlemen, I think primarily, we need to review the city, the planning staff's summary of possible findings. If we are in agreement with those, we could continue our discussion. It seems that the property owner agrees with those conditions as well.
Dean, I just have one question. Why can't the city grant or do a curb cut at the end of Foxborough to grant them access to that landlocked?
Because the, one, there's a tree at the end of that cul-de-sac. The other thing is that the-
A tree?
The place where there was actual, a crossing that was used before was farther to the, over here, and thirdly, in the absence of a actual constructed reinforced crossing, the city doesn't want farm equipment driving over the levy, except where there's an actual designed crossing for it.
And is there a designed crossing now?
There used to be a crossing that was over here, and what happened was, when this was a vacant field, the equipment would come up here, drive across, and cross right over in here. Well, now, this is a fenced-in mini-storage facility. The other thing is that the, there was a belief at the time from the owners that they would be able to make this levy go away, that the city would give them the land, and then they would, they would extend their mini-storage into here and have a road coming out. Well, the levy on the flood maps is credited with providing flood protection, and if the city were to take the levy out, then a lot of people would have to potentially pay flood insurance that aren't paying it today. So, the city is not interested in removing this levy, which means that you can't connect this to this. There are going to be two freestanding parcels separated by a levy.
I have a question about, when a piece of property is landlocked, are there any options to the owner? I mean, appearance, I mean, without some kind of right-of-way or approval from Foxborough, if they develop this, that definitely is going to be landlocked, they can't go across the levy. So, what's the options to Mr. Brown and with that property? None? Just can't get in there?
The city has worked with the Browns and trying, trying to come up with a solution, but there would be a cost involved in constructing an actual levy crossing like you have at the end of East Cloud or something like that, where you actually have a crossing that's, needs a certain load factor and all of that. We don't have that on that levy. That is a possibility, but the fact that- The matter is, we can't prevent somebody from selling a landlocked parcel to someone. All we can do is prevent them from building on it. So, if, if the Browns were to someday sell that property for development or to build houses on it or something, nothing could be built there until it was, the landlocked status was eliminated.
There is, I mean, there is an entrance at Evergreen to the east, in a different subdivision, but it, it does, you could access the parcel that way. It's based on the other side of the river, or the stream there on the map, right in that area, so that, and then Foxborough would definitely be a possibility, but yeah, it's basically just constructing an actual entrance over the levy is something that could be approved, it's just we haven't never, never gone to that level. I don't know if that's where they want it, want it to be or not, but it is an option, so it's, it could be done.
Thank you, Mr. Stack. Are there any options open to us in the approval of this zoning, possibly as a planned development district that would help us work out some compromise here?
The, certainly, just as you would have in the case of the recent discussion on the truck terminal and the Yost addition, the, more so here, you could build non-climatized storage buildings in a C-five district, you could do it in a planned development district. I think where staff and you as commissioners are somewhat handicapped is, in a traditional case, to request I-two zoning or C-five zoning, you're not required to submit a site plan with your application. One of our drawbacks here, as far as being able to provide information at a public hearing, is we don't know if a fenced-in enclosure is planned and to the extent of that, and we don't know, we can't tell you where or how many structures are planned, but it would be within your discretion to say, we think that this should not be zoned unless it is zoned in accordance with some sort of plan being submitted, and that could be in the form of a planned development district, which means that you are, a planned development district, the primary difference is that you're approving a plan along with the zoning, as opposed to just the zoning and, and leaving how it gets developed for another day. One of the things that we're handicapped with is that we simply cannot tell you how much would be fenced, where the fence would be. We understand the fence would be set back from Schilling if there was a fence, so that vehicles could get lined up to go in, but we can't tell you where buildings are proposed or how many there would be, and how far the fenced-in area would extend. But if that is something that you feel is, is needed to make a decision about zoning the property, then you could continue the hearing until a time when the applicant could submit a plan for fencing and for proposed building locations.
I sort of like that concept better. Plus, there's the issue of the utilities meant with Westar. How wide is that going to be?
It's going to be about twenty feet wide, about the width of, that is, that has to be done as, as part of the plat anyway, but what, what's likely to occur is that you've got a water line that crosses here, running east to west, and they're going to have to bring a stub off of that down and tie a hydrant to it at some place, and it's likely to come down this east side. And so, that's going to be twenty-foot in width, the Westar easement's likely to be twenty-foot in width, and the fire access lane is likely to be in twenty-foot in width, but we cannot tell you that either there is a access aisle or a gate that would be wide enough for the Browns' tenant farmer to go through.
I don't know what Troy would think about this, but it would seem logical to me, this is, right now, just, just approving this I-two is what I consider to be kind of poor planning. I mean, it'd be better to have some plan in front of you that addressed some of the issues we've heard here, and then look at that plan in its entirety, in my, in my opinion.
I guess my feeling, just throwing it out there for the rest of the commissioners, is it's not a great parcel of land, but I commend Simpson and them for wanting to approve it, and I think there's some win-win in here, but we've had Simpsons before us before, where they didn't really take care of the plan that they put together for a developed area by PDD. So, and I, I think there's an opportunity here to broker everybody's interest, so I'd like to see the plan before we approve the zoning, so I guess I'd favor the continuance.
And I would add that it seems like there are amicable enough relationships between everybody involved, that that's a gentleman's agreement, as the statement goes, but if there's something that everybody feels more comfortable with, so they know the outcome, both for us, for the staff, for the people involved, I would concur with what you're saying.
Mr. Chairman, I entertain a motion if you're ready.
Yes, sir. Please.
To continue, item P-13-11A, for the applicant to bring back a plan, better use of what's going on. I'd also add that they work with the Brown family on an ingress-egress access from both of that. I hope you would take that to Mr. Simpson and Mr. Beverley, that that would help us maybe make a better decision on what to do with this land. I think, I'll speak for the commissioners, but basically, what they're saying is, I think we're for cleaning this up, I think making it a better neighboring for yourself, but also, we have to acknowledge the Browns and how they're going to get in and out of there over that flood control dike. So, if they could take that in consideration, that'd probably help out the commission in future.
I just asked one question, and I think all this is fine.
Troy, you probably ought to come to the mic.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think all this is fine, but the inclination is, with this plan, that we're looking at I-two zoning, because if we do all this planning and come back, and then it's decided that it's going to be a C-five that brings in all the paving and other questions, then this is not a viable project. So, they're going to be spending money for something, and they're going to come back. So, I, I think all this is fine, as long as we're looking at I-two. If we're looking at coming back and it's going to be C-five, then they're probably going to have more questions.
What about planned development district? We use a lot of those, and then you can incorporate all that in, you can have gravel, you could have a gravel lot in planned development.
Yeah, but my understanding was, from reading through, and, I just read through this last night, was that there are no industrial planned developments that it would revert back to a C-five planned development.
We don't, we don't have, we don't have a planned industrial district, but we do have planned development districts that have I-two elements in them. The city commission actually approved a planned development district, I-two, for the Old Dominion Truck Terminal. So, that is available, but you are right to request clarification if that planned development district would be in the form with I-two development standards or not. That would be an important clarification. The other thing I wanted to clarify is, the motion would need to include both items 2A and 2B, for those items both to be continued, not just the one. But the commission does need to advise Mr. Vansel about whether that planned development district would be planned development district, but maintaining the I-two designation.
I favor the I-two, if it, if you can solve some of the problems you've got with the neighbors there, so.
I agree.
Site plan could-
Yeah, I think all what you're saying is fine.
Yeah, I think I would support the I-two, and typically, we haven't supported a lot of gravel projects, but based on the trees and the homeless people in that area, it doesn't look very good now. I think what you're going to do improves it, so gravel over what we have now would probably be supported by the commission, I would think, at a further meeting, once a plan has been established.
So, we're basic, the motion would be to come back with a plan, but underlying would be I-two requirement for that. Okay, I'd second that.
And I, as, because this is a public hearing, and we have interested parties, we would want that, our suggestion would be that this be continued to your April sixteenth meeting, for them to bring that back. That way, the public would know when it's coming back.
Okay. All right. That part of my motion, continue to April sixteenth meeting. It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll continue items 2A and 2B.
Both of them, okay.
Thank you very much. Application CU-13-1- Application CU-13-1, Mr. Thomas Van der Woot, on behalf of Access Storage. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is an existing facility that was established originally back in the 1970s. It was kind of an extension of the Centennial Commerce Circle that was also developed by Mr. James Nelson, and he built the original buildings on this property. Since that time, ownership has changed hands, and the city has accepted the roadway in front of this as a public street, named it as Copper Court, and so the property now has a Copper Court address. There are existing mini storage facilities on here. We met with Mr. Van De Voort at the Development Review Team, and we discussed a proposed expansion to put two additional 30-foot by 100-foot mini warehouse buildings, and the existing facility has 91 storage units. There would be 25 units in each of the building. One thing we haven't been able to quite figure out, maybe it was the fact that that was not recognized or looked at as a street at the time, but the buildings were allowed to be built within 15 feet of the Copper Court right-of-way there, so it does have a substandard setback, and there was a lot split that was done in here that occurred long ago that staff was not aware of, but that lot split basically created a property line right here on the edge of those buildings, so it has a zero setback over there, which is also pre-existing and non-conforming. We pointed out the use limitations. I-1 is different from I-2 in that, one, it requires paved parking, and, two, it requires a landscape plan, and, and we've laid out those development standards for you. So we wanted, John, if you could go to the aerial photo, and I just want to explain this, I guess this is not, that's not a very current photo. I, I thought we had something more current, but right here is George Stein's Broadway Mini Storage Facility, which was reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission in 2005. This property and this property are zoned the same, it's just that the standards for development, when this was initially developed, were lower than what the commission applied here. So here, if you drive by, all these aisles are paved, you've got a front, front yard landscape buffer strip here. Here, the buildings are close to the street, they are, there's no landscape front yard to speak of, and the surfacing is gravel. So it is a product of the time at which they were developed, as, as to what those characteristics are. So this is a relatively straightforward addition. The only other thing we point out is that there is a mapped floodplain associated with this channel and this channel here, which encroaches down into this area, so there is a minimum elevation requirement that Mr. Van De Voort would have to build to, and we have some specific recommendations about the plan. Certainly, you could approve the amended conditional use permit to allow the expansion, you could allow it subject to specified conditions or revisions, you could postpone consideration if you think additional information is needed, or you could deny the application if the required findings cannot be made to support a conditional use permit modification. If you do feel comfortable approving this, then we've got some suggested revisions and conditions. And the first of those are that we've got an over generous access aisle here, and so our suggestion is that the condition be that this building be shifted five feet, and this building be shifted five feet towards the center, to get a 25-foot aisle on all sides of the building. There would be a requirement for 14 parking spaces, which could basically be parallel spaces inside this area for customers. There would need to be an elevation certificate prepared for those buildings to confirm that they are elevated to 1238 or above, and if there's any storm pipelines or anything going into this ditch up here, there would need to be appropriate erosion control member, methods that would apply to that. So on page seven there, and carrying over to page eight, we just, we want to explain the existing conditions there. You have for the, except for the existing buildings, the entire fenced-in storage area is surfaced with gravel. This was allowed in 1977, when Mr. Nelson first developed the site and was inherited by Mr. Van De Voort. That surfacing was in place on December 17th, 1990, when the rules changed and paved parking standards took effect. So from that standpoint, because it's pre-1990, it's considered to be grandfathered in. He's not proposing to expand any of the parking areas or construct any new parking areas, just utilize the existing gravel areas. So on that basis, the parking ordinance does not require that he go back and pave. However, there is a need for a conditional use permit to be approved for this additional construction, and you have the authority, as part of the conditional use permit, to require the driving aisles between the proposed buildings to be paved as a condition of permit approval. So what we're saying is that you got gravel today, it's gravel fence line to fence line, it is grandfathered in, however, it does not conform with what the norm would be in an I-1 district, and you have the authority through a conditional use permit to require that, but the ordinance does not require it.
Dean, you have in one of your staff recommendations that the, one of the parking spaces be a handicapped accessible spot.
That would have, that will have to be paved.
Okay, that's what.
Yes. And we'll just work with him to designate an, probably an area up in the new area where he would have to put in a van-accessible parking space, because in his new construction, he's going to have to make one of his units there accessible, and we would work with him to locate that. But that is correct, that any handicap accessible stall must be paved, and you will see that around town, where you'll see a gravel parking lot with one paved handicap space.
Other questions of staff? May we hear from the applicant? And your name and address for the record, please.
Tom Van De Voort, 1325 Columbine Circle. At this point, I was only going to do one building, so, one on the east side is what I was going to do, and I did, I redrew my configurations for a handicap, and it would be the southwest corner of the building on the left, or on the right, I'm sorry, and have a handicap ramp right out in front of it with the sign and everything. And I don't know what else, if there's got any other questions, so.
Any problem going with the 25-foot setbacks on those two buildings, moving the two buildings closer together, is that okay? So you have the 25-foot setbacks on the new buildings?
Yeah, that's not a problem at all. Not a problem.
And I take it you've seen all the staff recommendations, and you're comfortable with them?
Yeah.
There were five setbacks.
Yeah.
And the only, we, we didn't mention, again, we, we're not, we're just comparing those in, in the way that they were addressed. Apparently, when Mr. Nelson built the buildings originally, the building official did not require front yard landscaping along that frontage, so there is none there. That is another discretionary item for you. Again, the, the I-2 standard is paving and front yard landscaping, but we're dealing with a pre-existing, non-conforming facility.
How do you make 14, I don't know, I'm lost at the 14 parking spaces.
What you do is you have basically parallel spaces that are 22 feet long and nine feet wide, and the idea being if these aisles are sufficient width, all you're asking to do is have enough width that a person's coming here, visiting their unit, they're parallel parking, and there's enough width for another vehicle to get by, or for a fire truck to get by. But they don't have to go out and mark the spaces, they would simply, it's a matter of looking to see that they have the space within the aisles for that many cars.
So they can park in front of somebody else's unit?
Yes.
And that's considered a parking spot?
Yes. The I, the idea is primarily to have parallel parking in here and have sufficient room that you don't have somebody in there that prevents other people from getting, and that's the purpose of the 25 feet, is so that you can have a vehicle parked and another one, no matter how large, get around it.
And I, my assumption, like in all these cases, I, I feel like I've become the proponent for paving, but I assume you have no interest in paving, right, because of the cost?
Not at this point, no.
Yeah.
I do not.
And, and so we're making another exception for paving. Why, Dean, the, the facilities that are in the upper left-hand corner, the ones that were put in after those two bottom ones, they're paved, why were they paved?
Right here?
Yeah.
Okay, the, as we explained, these buildings here were built in 1977 and 1978.
Okay.
The building official at the time did not require either paving or any front yard landscaping. So when Mr. Van De-
The, at that time, the ordinances didn't require it?
I don't believe the ordinance required it at the time, or at least the way it was applied to this property. There, there is quite a bit of confusion about whether this was in fact a street. It did not become a street until about five years ago. There, no one was seeming to claim it, but now the city has claimed it. This project here came in front of the Planning Commission in 2005. So the standard in place, when this proposal came before you, the I-1 district, as opposed to the I-2 district, requires paving, does not allow gravel, and requires front yard landscaping. This property and this property are zoned the same, but because of the point in time at which they developed, what is here is what is here, and it's, it's grandfathered in. This setback does not conform, this setback here is zero, does not conform, the surfacing does not conform, but it's, it's grandfathered. And so you have the authority to say, "In order to expand, we think the new area needs to be paved," because I-1 says that. The flip side of that is that if you have a property that is grandfathered, the only trigger for paving is if you are expanding the area of the paving surface that wasn't surfaced before.
Tom, can I ask a quick question? I just want to be sure that I heard correctly. Did you say something about only one building being built?
At this point, yes.
So we'd be approving this, but with the option to go ahead and build the second building at whatever time?
What we're suggesting, Mr. Van De Voort, is since you show his long-term plan for two buildings, so that he didn't have to come back to you if he wanted to build a second building, he could, he can build one, he's not obligated to build the second one, but you seeing the plan, you approve the option of having two additional buildings.
The other storage facility that's up to the upper left, that, that's owned by who?
George Stein.
Stein.
I think you said that.
Yes.
Other questions of Mr. Van De Woot? Thank you, sir. If we may, are there members of the, of the public that would like to address this issue? If you would come up to the podium? If there are none that want to comment about this issue, we'll bring it back to the commission. Gentlemen, are there questions or comments of the staff? How do you feel about the staff recommendations?
Well, yeah, I feel that this property is almost invisible from Centennial Road, and the access off Copper Street or Road, whichever it's called, is kind of unfortunate that there is all that gravel there, but it is pre-existing, and again, largely invisible to the general public. So I'm inclined to say we should just go ahead and approve this as requested. Right now, there's open storage on the property, which will be converted to storage in buildings, so for what little view of the property there is, it'll actually be improved by having more things inside. I really think we ought to just go ahead and approve this as presented, with the few conditions we have of, of moving the, the buildings for a full 25-foot setback.
Are you talking about the staff recommendations?
Yeah, the staff recommendations, the 25 feet. The, the parking spaces is essentially automatic, the way it was described, you know, then, and then having to build out of the floodplain is pretty much a given.
Is that a motion or an opinion?
So that's an opinion, and I could easily make it a motion.
The chair will accept the motion.
Okay. I would move that the application be approved in accordance with the five comments recommended by the staff.
There's a second? I'd second that motion. Is there more conversation or discussion?
I'm, I'm just going, I'm going to vote yes for the motion, but I'm going to make my little statement, I'm going to reluctantly vote yes again, in hopes that someday we can run out of grandfathered gravel areas for development in C5 and, and I-2 and PDD, as far as that goes, with that being said.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This item passes. Item number four, application CU-13-2, Ms. Colby Hamel, conditional use permit for a group daycare home. Staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have various categories of, of daycare that are registered through the Health Department and through the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. They have different licensing classifications. They have gotten rid of the registered daycare. Now, everyone who does daycare has to be licensed, but your licensing is for a specified number of children. In this case, Ms. Hamel has had a licensed daycare in this location since 2010, and going to a group daycare home category allows her to increase the number of children under her care, but it also requires that she have an outside helper or assistant to make sure that there is an adequate helper-to-child ratio. And so you can do licensed daycare in your home as a home occupation, doesn't require Planning Commission approval, but when you increase up to the level of having 12 children and an outside assistant, it becomes a conditional use permit. So the, the purpose of the hearing is to let neighbors know of the proposed change and intensity of use, and the opportunity for them to know about it and comment. So the property we're talking about is on the east side of Roach, it's in the vicinity north of Stewart Elementary School. We have a lot that's 9,200 square feet in size, it's a mid-block location, the only access is from Roach. We furnished you some photographs of the outdoor play area in the backyard. We're happy to say there's nothing non-conforming about this property. It is a proposal to expand what has been a, a daycare for at least two years. There's been an inspection done of the property by the Health Department and Fire and Building Services and Planning Departments. The plan is to care for children in the basement area, which will require a separate egress from the basement to allow children to get outside. There were some physical modifications in terms of smoke detectors and other things that the fire department wanted to see, but we believe that this location could contribute to the welfare and convenience of the public by providing daycare services in the vicinity of Stewart Elementary School. There aren't any physical changes proposed to the property, it is what it is, and the homes in this area date from the 1950s. It is what it is, and the homes in this area date from the nineteen fifties and sixties. And again, there won't be any change to the outside appearance of the home, just some increase in pickup and drop-off there. And Roach is an interesting street just because that the, in some cases, in locations along Roach, parking is restricted, and loading and offloading from the street is, is not ideal. And so in this case, we do have a, a parking situation where there is a, a wing on the driveway, and the applicant believes that it'll be possible, because of staggered drop-off and pickup, that most of the parents will be able to pull into the driveway and have the children load and unload in the vacant space in the front driveway. And so there wouldn't be the pickup or lining up of, of traffic in the street. As near as we can tell, the operation here has been going on since two thousand and twelve without any incident or complaint. And if you are satisfied that the off-street parking configuration has been satisfactorily addressed and the other required findings can be made, our recommendation would be approval of this request, subject to the three conditions that you see there relating to loading and unloading of children, and that no more children, than twelve children can be cared for at any one time in accordance with their license.
Questions of staff? We're going from ten to twelve, is that?
Yes, but the way they're counted is, is done differently, so it usually ends up being more than that. Your, the number ten also includes children under the age of twelve who reside in the home. So if you have your own children, they count towards that, but it basically allows you to have two additional outside children. And it, it tends to work better for, sometimes the childcare doesn't have twelve all day, but they might have overlapping shifts and allows them to have twelve there at one time.
Questions? May we hear from the applicant? And if we may, we'd like for the record your name and the address.
My name's Colby Hamel, and my address is nineteen thirteen Roach. And, do you have any questions? I've never done this, sorry. Do you have any questions?
I have a question. In that photograph, there's nothing parked in the three onsite parking spaces, and there's a car that appears to be half in the street and half in the lawn. Why is that, and is that legal?
That is my husband's fault, not mine. I told him to put it in the garage, and he did not put it in the garage, he put it on the street. We did that just for the picture, so you, because the car's usually in the garage, but it was about time to pick up kids from school.
I guess the "and is that even legal" goes to someone else, Mr. Stack or Mr. Andrews?
Everyone parks on the street on Roach.
But the car's half on the, on the parking, it looks like.
Oh, he probably meant to give the road a little bit more room.
Okay. Don't do that in the future, if we approve this.
Cloud all the time.
You can't do it on cloud, you can't get two cars parking on cloud and two cars going down the middle.
They park on cloud that way all the time.
Yeah, but you can't get four cars across on cloud.
Guess I don't get in on the cloud.
In fact, there's a, there's a third, third trail there where they park there all the time.
Okay.
I don't know if it's legal or not, but it happens.
It's a police question, I don't know. Road's too narrow, that's all I know.
Yeah. But we can blame your husband for that one, is that right?
Yeah, you can go ahead and blame him for that, he didn't listen.
Well, I, I do have a question too, Colby. The, when you, in the space of your driveway, have you had two cars side-by-side loading and unloading, and have they had adequate room for backing out? If one car is there, the car on the outside can still back out around?
Yeah, that, um, sorry, at the end of the driveway, if they have a, one of the other pictures you can see, it's actually pretty wide at the end of the driveway, so you can pull up, you can pull up really easy and pull out really easy. And we've had times where, because there's a, you can't see it from the picture, but on the side of the house, there's actually parking there too. I don't know if it's a legal description of parking, but there is parking there too, if it ever became that much. But it's more or less a group daycare, is more or less for parents who have more than one children. So most of my parents have like two or three kids, and that's why we need more. And I have twins, so.
I'd like to say, first of all, appreciate you bringing this, just because quality daycare is certainly something that's important in Salina and limited in Salina. And then secondly, I think your backyard looked kind of enjoyable. If I was a kid, I'd sort of like to try out some of those events you have out there.
My daycare kids love it, so.
And have you generally been at capacity?
I'm sorry?
Have you generally been at capacity?
Oh, yeah. I don't ever go above my numbers, I'm actually quite, I don't really know the word, but I'm one of those people that's afraid to get in trouble, so I try to stay under everything, so. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May, is there anyone from the public that would like to address this application? If there being none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Gentlemen, you've heard the staff recommendation and the conditions. Is there any further discussion on this item?
I would move-
Go ahead. I'm ready for a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to. I mean, go ahead.
I would move that we approve case CU thirteen-two as branded.
With the staff recommendations?
Thank you, with staff recommendations, thank you.
Second? Thank you. Any more comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item carries. Application SP thirteen-one, Elite Wireless, on behalf of NexTech.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first page in your agenda is all public hearing items. This is the, the last of the public notice, public hearing items. You will recall, in September of last year, we discussed a city-initiated proposal to put flagpoles in Indian Rock Park as a support structure for possible future cellular antennas. That would be internal. That was turned down by your recommendation, and the City Commission concurred, so that project did not happen. This is not a city-initiated project, but it is located on city-owned property, and the application is to construct a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot monopole tower that would be stealth in design. And so there's two different concepts in the construction of towers or support systems. One is camouflage. Camouflage means you design it to look like something else. You design it to look like a tree, or a saguaro cactus, or a water tower. Stealth means that the, and this represents a flag, but this is not necessarily a flagpole. Stealth means that the antenna components are going inside the cylinder of the pole and would not be externally mounted. So even if you had three co-locating users, their antennas would be at different vertical heights, but they would be enclosed within the inside of the, the pole support. So this application is, was filed by Elite Wireless on behalf of NexTech Wireless. And as we explained in our report, NexTech is trying to get established within the Salina market as a cellular service provider, and they have done a few co-locations around the community, and this is a proposal to construct an actual tower. So John's been going through these maybe faster than I can keep up. But John, if, do you have the aerial, or the photo, elevation photo of this area? That would be the street view from Kenwood Park Drive. Okay, this is what it looks like today. And so you've got an existing light pole here that supports lights for the Bicentennial Center parking lot. You've got light poles for Kenwood Cove. This pole right here is a hundred feet tall. There's a pole that's harder to see over here that's in the center of this parking lot. That pole is a hundred and fifteen feet tall. And I'm not sure about the height of this pole. The, the platform for the slides over at the Aquatic Center is fifty-five feet tall. Do you have the photograph, John, with the superimposed? Okay, one thing I wanted to point out here, this was done, there's, there's two options for poles. Obviously, one is the, the white option. The other elevation that we showed you was the bronze-looking pole, which we think would be more compatible with the Bicentennial Center setting. But if you could go back to nineteen again, John? This is the proposal, and so for perspective, this is about a hundred feet tall. This pole would be a hundred and fifty feet tall. We'll ask Mr. Gado, representing NexTech, to clarify for us how many co-locating users this tower would accommodate. But the plan is that there would be a architectural-type fencing around the perimeter of a sixty-by-eighty-foot fenced-in equipment storage building area, and then landscaping around the perimeter of it. And then a, within that, the, the monopole, and again, with the stealth design, the antennas would be inside the, the cylinder of the pole, not externally mounted, as you see in some locations. And so to, to walk through our, our steps for analysis, we've given you the background history on Kenwood Park and the Kenwood Park area. This is part of the site carved out for Kenwood Cove, and it's the only part of Kenwood Park that still retains some residential zoning. So that puts it as a Class C permit. And again, the ordinance in Salina was set up to give a locational preference to publicly-owned sites, such as what you have at Central High Stadium and the South High School Athletic Fields. And so this fits within that locational preference in terms of performance standards, that if you have a tower that's a hundred and fifty feet in height, you should be able to accommodate three additional, or three providers, the original and, and two additional. It is a stealth-type monopole proposed. It's set back adequately from Kenwood Park Drive. We showed you an elevation that's white. Mr. Louthen with Parks and Recreation and myself believe that the bronze finish is more appropriate for this setting. And so we, we've walked through the different standards that you're to look at, conformity with the comprehensive plan. This is a public quasi-public use area. It does fall within our locational preferences. I think we pointed out in our report, and you may see it that way as commissioners, is that the, one way to interpret your decision about Indian Rock Park is that you don't think any city park is appropriate for towers. But as a staff, we believe that a distinction could be made that Indian Rock Park is, has some certain historical environmental characteristics which aren't shared by Kenwood Park, which is a more commercial setting. Our surrounded uses are the Bicentennial Center, the County Fairground Buildings, the Kenwood Cove, and a little farther away, the YMCA. And then you have Oakdale Park across to the west. We think that given the large structures in Kenwood Park and the existing light poles that are there, this type of pole would be less visually obtrusive here than it might be in some other park locations. This is an open public space that connects the Aquatic Center with the Bicentennial Center. There's already large light poles in the vicinity. We think if we went with the bronze or metallic color, it, it would blend in with what's at the Bicentennial Center. There is screening and vegetation proposed around the perimeter of the fencing area. This is different in terms of the scale of what's around it, in terms of the Aquatic Center and the Bicentennial Center building. It's not an entryway to the city, and we're not dealing with any historically or environmentally sensitive area. The one thing we would like Mr. Gado with NexTech to articulate would just be, they, they need to show that they have made a good effort to look at mounting the facility on an existing structure or tower. And so one thing we would request representatives of NexTech is justifying the need for a tower, because there's no existing structure that could be used for co-location or, or support. So we're looking at Kenwood Park, north of the Aquatic Center. It's one of the preferred locations. We're looking at a stealth design. Certainly not all parks are created equal. And so your role here is to look at this proposal in light of the factors that we have listed there, and determine whether you think the placement of a stealth-type monopole tower, a hundred and fifty feet in height in the area proposed, would be compatible with Kenwood Park setting. We did want to indicate that you, if you can make the findings in support of the stealth tower in this location, a motion should be made to recommend approval of a permit as requested, with any conditions or modifications. You could request that the applicant modify their proposal to reduce the height of the pole, change the proposed pole location, reduce the size of the equipment area, relocate the equipment area, or limit or get rid of the fenced-in area altogether. You could also recommend denial of the request to locate this in Kenwood Park if you don't think it meets any of the locational criteria. So we, we provided you with a whole, a lot of maps, coverage maps and background material that we would primarily like the applicant to focus on, their efforts to co-locate this and, and what led them to the decision that a tower was needed. And then the other aspect this, we didn't really touch on, is that if you consider the crowds that gather at the Bicentennial Center, the Y soccer fields, the River Festival, County Fair, things, this, this has the highest density of cell phone traffic of almost any location in the city in terms of users trying to use their phones at one time. And that, that is a factor that also needs to be taken into consideration. With that, I'd be open to any questions you have. We have representatives of NexTech here to speak on the issue.
Questions of staff?
In the empty pages, there's a couple of references to flag that pole, and I'm assuming that we are not actually talking about a flag.
This-
Plain monopole.
Yes.
No light fixture on it either.
Correct. What we, what we're, what we're pointing out is that, at this time, as we understand it, there's no proposal that this would be a multi-use. In other words, it's not a light pole that happens to also support. It's not intended to be an oversized flag pole. It's intended to be a stealth-type pole.
It's just a plain pole, no light fixtures, no flags.
Okay.
Dean, if I get this correct, the proposed lease area looks really big. That's on our, our aerial photo here. And this is just for one pole, that's all we're approving, right?
Right. The, the idea behind the fenced-in area below is that if you have multiple users, they all have their own equipment sheds or things, so you have to, you have to design that in a way that, let's say you had four users here, and this, they would have a building and equipment here, user one, user two would be over here, user three would be over here, user four would be over here.
I'm not seeing any buildings in the, in the-
I see one.
This, this is a, this is a building right here.
Where's there a building on this? How do you run that pole with no building?
Because there, there's equipment, little equipment cabinets at the bottom in the cell tower sites that we have. We have both equipment cabinets and we have buildings. If you go over to Central High Stadium, you will see that there is a building there that houses the equipment for the Verizon use there. Our service providers have used both buildings and smaller equipment cabinets. But all, the area- But all, the area at the tower at East Crawford is one hundred feet by one hundred feet. That is the fenced in area. This is proposed to be sixty by eighty. What was discussed at Indian Rock Park was proposed to be fifty by fifty. And the one at South High is fifty-eight feet by thirty-eight feet.
And the maximum amount of users in that pole can be what, four?
We would ask Mr. Gado to clarify what this is designed for, but it's, it's a question both of strength and then every user needs to be in a different vertical location. So we would ask Mr. Gado to clarify how many users this is designed to accommodate. But obviously, if you go at a hundred and fifty, you can accommodate more users than you can at a hundred and twenty.
And there is a financial benefit to this, to the city?
Uh, to be determined, but yes, there would need to be a ground lease for this property. And the revenue from that ground lease would go to the city of Salina for some use, which has not been determined. And there, there's not a lease in place. What we have is an authorization from the Director of Parks and Recreation to pursue an application on city park property.
Are we ready to hear from the applicant?
Let me just, I would like to hear from the applicant too, but something to throw into consideration. If we have, let's say, four buildings or cabinets there, one of the discussions from the public last time around was the noise that the air conditioner would make. You've got a lot of noise already, of course, at the, at Kenwood Cove when it's in operation. And one of the things that I noted on here was that, at least on the, the, looking down, the, the airplane view, I guess, of, of the drawing, it's fairly close to the large pool and to the complex. And I wondered if there was any talk about whether it would be moved away from there partly because of the noise, just what the considerations were.
We would, we did and would dispute that. Our research shows that they, these places are equipped with generators and they only run in the case of a power outage. And if there is no power outage, you're not going to hear the generator or anything running.
The, the argument made then at that time was that there was air conditioning and that would be required in a tower that was inside with all the heat generated. So is that not the case?
If you go to visit any of those sites at Central Stadium or South High and go stand next to that, you won't hear a sound, even if it's a hundred degrees outside. That the noise comes from, these, all these are equipped with generators. And if there's a power outage, then the generator kicks in and the generator will make noise. But there, there's no constant running of generators or compressors or anything like that at these facilities. It's, if you're concerned about buildings or things of that nature, it would be the aesthetics of the buildings. And I think if you went by Central High or South High, you would find those buildings there to be quite attractive. And that, that is generally done through the lease arrangement. But the, the sixty by eighty is a little larger than what you have at South High, but the tower here is a little taller. And if you had potentially one more user, then you might have need for four buildings instead of three or two.
So I'd still be interested in hearing from the applicant or whomever about the reason to place this closer to the swimming pool complex rather than to the, the parking lot.
Or why not closer to the bicentennial center?
I can tell you why.
Okay.
The, this, there's a boundary here between the zoning lot that belongs to Kenwood Cove and the bicentennial center. And in terms of the operating agreement and everything else revolving the bicentennial center, it is much simpler and cleaner for all involved if the site is located on the park site as opposed to the bicentennial center site. So-
So it may not be the best aesthetic, but it's convenient?
No, there's a belief that it's the best. Of all the people that reviewed it and it got to this point, this is the preferred location for all the city agencies involved that have looked at it.
Well, personally, I, I gotta, I just gotta tell you the truth. I'm a big Kenwood Cove frequenter. I, I buy family pass every year and I park on the, right under those trees when you, that little walkway that goes out to the shared parking lot. I park on those trees over there. And I've seen kids playing out there in that, that grassy area. I saw some people picnicking out there one time. I'm, I'm not saying that, that one outweighs the other, but I'm saying there is, that is use. And it, and you know, frankly, large grassy areas are, are an attractive addition to any city. And that is certainly by a park area. So I don't know if I totally buy the argument that it's the, the, the least obtrusive of things. I, I would think something maybe closer to the bicentennial center that, that, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's visually going on around there. And it's a tall building anyway. I don't know how tall that, that is, but, but, but I, I guess personally, I'm, I would like to hear from the applicant too. I guess I'm a little more concerned about the buildings than I am the, the tower in the grassy area.
What, what is the concern about the buildings?
Well, if they're, if they're, if that area is propagated with four buildings inside that thing, then it has a lot different look than four, you know, podium sized things like we would, we had talked about at the, the Indian Rock location.
Right. It is, it is possible in, in some cases because of space, you have equipment cabinets, other than not so buildings.
One thing in the plan that might help, I don't know if this will help, but it is, it does have a landscape plan in here and they can be expected to landscape in such a manner that really the buildings are pretty well hidden, can be. And, and the, the plan's in here for that.
Well, and, and you know, that other building that's over there on the side, I don't know what that's for. That's not an attractive building.
It's a big metal building.
Yeah, that, that metal building that's over there. So I mean, it's not, this area isn't sacred to me, but, but certainly I hate to, hate to see us not look at all the options.
It kinda actually makes the metal building look better.
Right. We, we-
And it doesn't take that large a chunk out of the fruit.
We, one, we have a setback requirement from Kenwood Park Drive. That's why the, it's set where it is. It's, it's a setback equal to the height of the tower. And it is, it just is that distance away. The other thing that we have discussed is that occasionally on a cell tower, you can get ice buildup. And it's not good to have a cell tower with cars parked underneath it.
The, the tower is, I presume, a sufficient distance away from the lap pool?
It is on the same property as the lap pool. There's no minimum requirement that it be a certain distance away, only from a public street.
And in regard to landscaping, I agree with Mr. Washington. If you look at the illustration design, you don't really see a building. And as Mr. Kennedy said, you had landscaping, but I would think that the landscaping plan would be somewhat different if you had four housing, whether it be cabinets or buildings, than it would be if you had one.
Right. If you were to drive up to the base of the tower at the East Crawford Recreation Area, you would not be able to tell us how many buildings are in there because you wouldn't be able to see through the landscaping to know. And so that, that's, the idea is the, the fencing is there for security. You put the landscaping outside the fence to, to buffer that area. That, that is a recommendation that you can make or not make, but the, it is possible to require that the buildings that are placed within a fenced in equipment area be attractive buildings, as I believe the buildings at South High and Central High actually enhance the area. They don't detract from it.
Gentlemen, may we hear from the applicant? Please, sir, and your name and, and address for the, our record.
Good afternoon. My name's Richard Gado. I'm from Hayes, Kansas. I'm with Nextech Wireless. Thank you for taking time to consider this. I know cell towers are an issue. And so we definitely look forward to working with the city. I'd like to, before we go forward, kind of go back and explain a little bit about what Nextech's done here in the last year, year and a half in this area. To grow our market in this area, we, about a year and a half ago, decided to expand in the, what I'm going to call the Salina to McPherson Corridor, all the way down I-35 to McPherson. And we're looking further south. So this, this is a logical step. In that period, we did twenty-six towers currently have been built or co-located on. And I will tell you that of those twenty-six, I think it's four that have been built. All the rest of them have been co-locations, whether it's on an existing tower. We've also used grain elevators in McPherson. So we try and find the best solution that's the least obtrusive that we can. We do have nine locations in the city of Salina. And we did go on air March first. So we've been, and this, and the reception has been great. You know, we've had more subscribers sign up in the last nineteen days than we definitely expected. Our numbers have far exceeded what we expected. So that tells us there's a demand for what we're offering us. The, I'm going to try and answer all your questions here. So the design that we're making an application for is like Dean said, is a hundred and fifty foot stealth monopole. And Dean was, is correct in that all the antennas, all the cabling, everything else is inside the pole. So from the outside, you will just see a, a pole going up a hundred and fifty feet. There will be no lighting on the pole. The FAA does not require it at that height. And there will be no flags attached to the pole. The flag issue, we originally discussed with the City Parks and Rec Department and they said, you know, we really don't need the flags on the pole. And that's fine with us because they were going to be responsible for the replacement of those flags. So I think they were looking at everything. Additionally, for us, it also allows us to, foundation wise, to make a little bit smaller foundation in the ground that's not seen by the public. But, so it, it, it's a win-win for everybody. The location, we chose this location and we did do co, look at all the other options. But we have a void in our service area. And it's this, what I'm going to call the central, east central corridor here. And it's a void that frankly, everybody has. We're not alone. That's why you saw the request for Indian Rock Park being built. We, if you noticed, we kind of stood on the sidelines and waited to see what the result of that was before we presented this application. So that definitely tells us, not just for us and our equipment, there's a need, but for other providers, there's, there's a need in this area. The location of the bicentennial center with the amount of events that occur there, with, you know, whether it's the Smoky Hills Festival, the Iron Lead Sled, the 4H events, you know, the rodeo events, the football games, whatever. And I know bicentennial center is getting geared up again and they're doing some things that they hadn't done in the past. And, and that's great. But with that and the addition of the park across the creek, it's a very high density area. And there's nothing worse for any cell phone provider than to be able to have fifteen thousand people or ten thousand people there and they all turn on their cell phones at the same time. We have a joke that in Wichita, when Billy Joel and everybody was at the New Interest Center, our levels stayed all the same. Everybody's levels were the same for text messaging and all that. And as soon as Taylor Swift came, it went through the roof. It's a different crowd. The kids sit there and text message and the older folks, they just sit back and enjoy the music. So, but it is, it is an issue of service and being able to service the area that, that we need to. The pole design is again a hundred and fifty foot. It's a monopole. It will house five, locate five additional, five total carriers. There will be five spots in the pole. Because there are five spots, we felt that this was important because of the location of this one, of this look, of this pole, that we have the five carriers. We've, and also with the desire and the policies of the city of Salina for their co-location requirements that, you know, we, others co-locate on poles, existing towers. We felt that that was important to be able to get a pole that was high enough that A, it would do that and B, it would also be able to reach the signal strength out that we need. We are a little bit down in a valley in the bicentennial area. Rock Creek was up on a hill. There's an obvious reason why everybody wanted to go up on Rock Creek because it was up on a hill. And if I could do that, I'd do it too. But, so getting the height is, is a little bit important, but it also allows us to have five carriers, total of five carriers. So that's five locations inside the pole for, and we're, we're going to take one at least and there would be possibly four other, it would be up to four others. So because of that, that's why the compound is the size it is. The size that we have for our building, I will give you an example, is much smaller than the size Verizon has. And a perfect example of that is if you go out to Salina South, no, I want to say South, by the highest, by the mall, the one that's a couple blocks away from the mall. We just co-located on that. We're the only other co-locating carrier on that. Verizon had it. They built a compound and they put a building in there that's so big that we couldn't even get an eight by ten building in there, an eight by eight building. We had to go with outdoor equipment just to get at that location. We know that if, our experience has told us that if we were to do something like that and make this small compound, that other people would be coming back to you and saying, well, we don't have a compound big enough to put our buildings in and we got to have our buildings. So we're trying to be proactive. We recognize that this is a co-location and that that's the city's direction that they want to go. And so we're trying to be proactive in that. I will tell you that the normal cell site has chain link fence with, it's eight foot tall. This site will have wrought iron fence that is eight foot tall. That is an agreement we've made with the city. It will be matching these existing fence with the, at the swimming area. Okay? The landscaping will be zero scape landscaping. And we're gonna do our best. I mean, we, we're a little bit at the mercy of the, of the greenhouses, but we're going to try and get the best and tallest items that we can so that immediately this area is very well covered and protected through the landscaping. To give you an idea, we're spending seventeen thousand dollars just on landscaping for this site. That's the budget. Twenty-two thousand on the fencing, which normally we spend a couple of thousand. So we've got, I think we're, you know, really been determined to make this site a site that is appealing to everyone that comes, whether it's to the swimming area or to the bicentennial or to the rodeos or, or whatever else is going on in there. Air noise. The air conditioners that do run, I'll tell you, they're no louder than a house air conditioner that runs on a house. And that's the noise you're going to hear when they are on. They aren't on all the time. They're only on when they need to be. Then they cycle off. The generators that Dean talked about, they only come on when there's a power outage. Frankly, at that point, no one should be around there anyway. So-
A lot bigger problems at that point.
I'm sorry?
There's a lot bigger problems around at that point.
Yes, exactly. So the generators just come on for a power outage. They do do a test every once in a while just to make sure they continue to operate and that's usually done. Most time it's done on a night. The night guys will test it then, but I can't say that for everybody. The night guys will test it then, but I can't say that for everybody, but that's the way we do it. I do think that this, what we tried to do in our proposal with the city and working with the city was create a area that we recognize is missing in service and address that, and also being able to address the city's requirements of co-location for future tenants at this location. The question came up about the lease. The lease is, we have the basic terms worked out, out of it, and I will tell you that the City Parks and the city manager have negotiated one heck of a good lease. This will be, I can fair, say with a lot of certainty, this is the most expensive site that Next Tech Wireless has ever built. Just between constru-, construction without a doubt, and the lease-wise, I think it's probably the most expensive lease we've ever done. And that's, it's, I, I've looked at the leases for that Verizon signed with the school district, and it's more than those, I can guarantee you that. So the city negotiated a good, a very, very favorable deal for their taxpayers. And I think that's all my notes. I, I know you guys have a couple of questions, and so I'll entertain the questions from the commission.
Questions for the applicant?
Tell me about the size of the, the enclosure, the equipment enclosure, the building.
Each, each?
Height mainly.
The, the height, most of them are six to eight feet. I mean, there isn't one out there, but ours is eight, six foot, no, seven foot, seven or eight foot. I wanna say it's eight, let's say eight foot, just to be on the safe side.
So it's as high as top of the fence?
It'll be as high as top of the fence. That's why we will go into eight-foot fences to.
And then what about the other service providers that they sign on?
Most of those, I mean, all of them that I've seen use, I think you've probably seen those brown buildings that are adjacent to compounds, and those are eight foot in height.
Dean, can we put some kind of regulation in there as to the height of the? I wouldn't mind them being a foot over the, the height of the fence, but I don't want something that's fourteen feet tall in there.
You could have a condition that any buildings placed within the fenced-in compound cannot exceed the height of the fence. It work for you?
That would work. I, I will tell you though, that, and I'm just being, being honest with you, we may get some feedback from potential co-location people, other carriers, that say, "Well, our standard building's ten foot tall," and they'll throw a fit. I'm just being honest with you and.
Give them some fudge.
Yeah.
Ten or twelve or something.
There you go.
Well. And I understand where you're going. You don't want this big, tall building sticking up out of the middle of this fence. You know, I agree with that, and if we could go ten foot or something like that, I think that's more than reasonable and fair.
Well, I think as hard as it is to find a location, I, I would think that if they wanna co-brand in there or go in there, they could figure out a way to make their building fit. I mean, you're not the only person that's coming in front of us to put that there. So next, or if Verizon wants to go in there, I can't imagine they're not gonna go in there because they can't get a building underneath.
They would work something out, I'm sure, but I will tell you what they do is they contract to buy those brown buildings that you see. They buy those by the thousands, and they just, so they would have to figure up something different if that height was to exceed any limits that were set. But I, I don't think it's a deal killer, if you will.
There are a number of small buildings within sight of this, this location, including at least three of the public wells. Those public well buildings have to be at least twelve feet high, so I recall. And then we have picnic shelters across the street that are probably twelve to fourteen feet high. I don't, I don't see why we can't allow up to twelve-foot building. When you're standing on the ground looking over an eight-foot fence, you're not even gonna see the top of the twelve-foot building in, in most cases. Unless you're already nine feet tall, there's very few people that tall.
Other questions?
Mr. Curtis, I have one that, I'm, I'm just curious about it, may or may not have a bearing on it, but after the last hearing that we had on cellphone tower in Indian Rock Park, despite information that we had at the contrary, I read in the Salina Journal that Donnie Mars had indicated that he would be willing to put a cell tower on his Marymount complex in quite a high location. And I'm just curious about whether anybody approached Mr. Mars and if there was any discussion about that among any companies, yours or others.
We're currently located on Marymount.
I see.
On the highest spot in that, on, on the towers.
And was that since that?
We've been up there, that was actually one of our first sites that went on the air. We've been there, it, we were up there before the Mary, the Indian Rock issue was heard.
Okay.
So what he was telling you is that he's got space available.
Yeah.
I mean, in, in a nutshell, that's, but yeah.
So is there a reason that he has additional space available?
For other carriers, yeah. I'm, I'm sure he does.
That because Verizon was not the applicant in that case, we couldn't really comment on that since they, but the driving force from that, from Verizon, was that they could not locate on the Marymount administration. That was not an alternative to building a tower in Indian Rock Park. And since they took that position, the city has issued three permits for antenna co-locations on the Marymount administration building, including Next Tech and AT&T and Sprint. So that's a Verizon item, it's not a Marymount administration building item.
And what, yeah, I just, you know, I wanna say that cell towers are something that have become a necessary evil. I mean, we all have so many wireless devices, and they're saying now, many people have two, three wireless devices apiece, and we're gonna have them amongst us. There's no option to that. I, I'm pleased that Next Tech, and I think you're a haze-based company, if that's not correct.
That is correct.
And I'm pleased to see a Kansas company getting involved in this market. I think it's good for our state, and frankly, this could be somewhat good for our community as well.
Well, we, we wanted to be on air in, before Christmas, and we didn't make that. But we have opened a retail location here, and we're, we're definitely planning on being in, in this area. In fact, I will tell you that we're already looking at upgrading the service we have in this area to, to 4G service.
I'm pleased to see that.
That's on the drawing board, and we hope to have that out in the next few months.
Is Salina the biggest city that you're currently located in?
Um, yes, yes.
Well, glad you're here.
Glad you're here, and I appreciate everybody who wants to bring data capacity to Salina. I mean, it's as important as telephones were in their time, the interstate highways are, and for every business needs those, needs this capability for their commercial interests. And I'm all for bringing all the capacity we can here. I mean, we're a step behind Manhattan and everybody east of us, so we want it all as fast as we can get it.
Well, we're gonna, it's, we're gonna do our damnedest to, to change that. My boss yells at me every day where we at on it, so. We're working, we've just actually finalized the equipment for the upgrade, and so I plan on being, seeing Dean a lot here in the next few weeks.
One question, the bronze tower was mentioned by Dean. Now, is that a problem for you, to use bronze towers opposed to aluminum?
Absolutely not, absolutely not. The proposal was just white and.
I kinda wanted a purple one.
A purple?
I will tell you that.
Can you blue?
I will tell you, it's, it's the standard colors from what I'm being told are white and bronze. So anything above that eats into the, the already nonexistent budget.
I agree, bronze is kinda the feature color in the other poles down there, so.
Yeah, and we thought that would be the solution, and everybody would be agreeable to that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the community that like to comment on this item? There being none, we'll bring it back to the commission, gentlemen, discussion?
Well, I, I agree with Commissioner Kennedy. I, I think that cellphone towers are, are necessary evil, but, but they are necessary, and they, and they do base a lot of our community growth on, on factors that are available for people to use, and, and one of them is bandwidth. So anyway, did you have something?
I do have a question. I'm not quite sure I can ask Deion to speak or from the off, or from the city of Salina, or?
We've got Chris Curtis and Bob Ash here.
Oh, I'm sorry. So whoever's from the Parks and Rec, I have a question for them.
Yeah, I'm actually the Recreation Superintendent.
Okay.
Standing in for Deion today.
Okay. My only question is, being from a real estate background, once I own the property next to me, I don't wanna give it up very easily because it's hard to acquire. It's easy to look at this now, but I'm trying to look ten years down the road. We put a seven million or four million dollar facility in there, and we're gonna give up this space. Do you ever, I mean, ten years down the road, I don't know what's gonna happen, but I would hate for us to be sitting there going, we've, the, the park is too small, we've now hit fifty-five thousand people, and we need to expand the park, and guess what, we've given away all of our land.
Right, we discussed that, and if you, you'll notice just to the left and below that mound, if you, if you're familiar with Kenwood Cove, that's just an open area. That was actually slated or, or, you know, looked at as potential growth. You'll see the fence, you know, includes all that area, so we've talked about, you know, anything from a big speed slide or another feature that if we needed to add on, we'd have, we'd have room. That's what I want, yeah, speed slide. That, there'd be plenty of space there, and we still have some other area that we could expand if we needed to. But yeah, we did talk a little bit about that, we did, did kinda factor that in.
How long is the lease for?
Oh, I, I don't know.
The lease is for, the initial lease term was for five years, and then it has five, five, five-year renewals. So it's a total of up to thirty years. And I, I'll be honest with you, the reason we, normally we do a twenty-five-year lease, but the reason we requested and they agreed to the thirty-year lease was because of the construction cost of the stealth pole. Just to let you know, a stealth pole is an additional hundred thousand dollars. And then all, all the foundation and everything else, which doubles in size. So it adds dramatically, and for us to recoup our costs, we have to, we ask for the additional five years.
And Dean alluded to this earlier, we, we discussing, you know, that there is some financial windfall and some, some gain to the city, obviously. Deion and Bob Ash and myself have discussed future potential uses and some of the, you know, additional features was discussed, and possibly down the road, we could start putting some money aside to start looking at, at.
New clubhouse at Indian Rock?
Yeah, that, yeah, there you go. Again, not, not formally, but we have discussed some of those, those needs.
I'm just gonna leave it up to you guys know your job better. That was my only concern, though, was giving that up, and if you're, I, I'm gonna go off of that. You guys are experts, and you don't have a concern with that, but.
Yeah, there'd be a certain point, you know, we built this facility, you know, as a regional draw, and if Salina continued to grow, that there may be a, a need for, you know, maybe a, a smaller pool somewhere else, and maybe you get, you get to a certain point, you're gonna just jam so many people in there that maybe you'll look at, at decentralizing a little bit and maybe adding a, a community pool or a neighborhood pool, something like that. You know, it may be a possibility that this would still be your, your main facility, but, you know, branching out a little bit and doing a satellite pool or something like that would be an option. But I do think there would be ample room for expansion, so.
Thank you.
Any other question?
All right. I make a motion.
Ready for a motion?
I'd, I'd move that we approve Special Permit Application thirteen-dash-one with the following conditions, and I hope I have them the way we've talked about. One is the necessary approval permits from the city be secured, color of the pole to be bronze, architectural landscaping per the design as submitted, no flag and no light, and the height of the buildings to be, not to exceed twelve foot.
Second that.
Been moved and seconded, is there further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The item carries, thank you very much. Our next item, number six, Application P-13-2, 2A.
Thank you. This item comes to you from the city of Salina and the, specifically the Engineering Department, and it is a request to reconfigure some property in the vicinity of the North Ohio Street and York Avenue intersection. And it is a product of the acquisitions that occurred when the North Ohio overpassed. The acquisitions occurred primarily in two thousand and four, and then construction of the overpass itself in two thousand and five and finishing in, in two thousand and six. And the aerial photo that we have here, the, the bright yellow lines represent the tracks that are owned by the city. The city owns this tract here. It was a combination of the former Triplet Incorporated Office Building and Hoff Machine and Welding, the occupied locations here and here. Those were removed, and then there were three buildings here that were removed. The city acquired that, as well as some right-of-way along here. And so what you see here is Ohio Court is the old path of Ohio Street in the original right-of-way. You had a reconfiguration here at Van Horn, and then York Street was slightly reconfigured to come in here. So what we are proposing, John, if you wanna go to the, the slide of the proposed replat, is to reconfigure this area. And so what you would have is an area out here that would function as the right-of-way for the overpass and for York here that we noted in our report unusually would, would not be designated as right-of-way, would, would continue its status as, as fee title ownership by the city. But we would want to structure that in a way that it could be used the same as right-of-way for franchise and public utilities. So we will work with the city attorney to come up with that. But as part of the acquisition of some right-of-way farther south from Triplet Self-Storage, this property was pledged by the city to be allowed to be acquired by Triplet Self-Storage. So this plat creates a lot here, Lot One, Block Two, that would be available for their purchase and use. It's a little small to be a self-sufficient lot, but Triplet owns here, and it could be joined to that, increase that land area. This is the other lot here, this is Midway Wholesale here. They had an agreement to purchase this for an expansion, and the, the timeframe involved for consummating that agreement expired, and it, it did not move forward. But getting this done and, and getting this tract identified and created into a lot that could be acquired and developed in some fashion is important to do anyway. So in the audience today is, is John Harvey, the city surveyor. He has done the field work and prepared this drawing to finding the public space and the available private space. And so what is before you is a proposed plat that would create Lot One, Block One north of York and Lot One, Block Two, south of York, which are both, the property underlying is, was I-two and I-three when it was purchased. And so we think this is in a form where it's ready for your action, and we would recommend approval of this reconfiguration of the intersection be approved, subject to working with the city attorney to develop a note authorizing public and franchise utilities to place their facilities in the public ownership portion. And then before there's development that occurs, there's some drainage challenges up here, and there will need to be a, a drainage study done before a permit is issued for that. So if you have any questions about the lay of the land up there or, or how the boundaries were decided, I would defer to John Harvey for those questions. Anything about the, the zoning or future land uses, I could visit with you about that.
In the aerial photo, and when I, you can see that there's actually a gravel turnaround sort of circle kinda rudely thrown out there in the property on the north side of York Street. It was, when I drove by the other day and looked at it, was being used for truck parking by someone presumably Midway or their customers. What city agency is charged with the management of this piece of property? And is there gonna be anything, are we gonna continue to allow them to use that as?
They're not supposed to be. Part of what this does is the, the Parks and Recreation Department takes care of much of the landscaping there, but the overall maintenance and responsibility for the overpass lies with Public Works and Engineering. And so they would be the ones that would make sure. We have had some encroachment and trespassing before and have generally just reminded the owners, abiding owners, that that's not their property to use.
Other questions?
Other questions? Um, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? There not being, uh, gentlemen, can we make a motion on this item?
I'd make a motion that we approve, what number are we approving here? P thirteen dash two, two A, as recommended by city staff, is that the right number?
Yes.
Yes.
And there's two, and there were two, I think there were two notes by the city that need to be included in that motion, Notes One and Two under the staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Been moved and seconded, is there discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The item carries. Item number seven, application, uh, PDD eighty-one four M. Chances LC requesting approval of a final development plan for, uh, well, I'll let the staff repeat it.
Mr. Hurs has this report for you.
Can you have a moment, John, if we could just go to the aerial photo, we'll begin there. The Central Mall Development is a planned development district that originated in nineteen eighty-six and it was developed with a central mall along with outlots that you see along Ninth Street and Magnolia. The Ninth Street outlots are all, along with the Central Mall itself, is a, have a PDD C-three underlying zoning, which is adequate for restaurants, which is what we, we're dealing with today, is two separate, uh, restaurant proposals for an outlaw just south of the existing IHOP, so it's this property right here. The Central Mall Development was designed with a pond for total outbuild for detention of drainage and stormwater and also has utilities that run along the outskirts, some sewer lines that run along the outskirts of the main Central Mall property, as well as some water lines that connect to, there's a water line that runs around the central building, comes across and then stubs down to the properties that we're looking at today. Access for the property, there is this Century Plaza Drive that comes off of this entrance here and then acts as a frontage road along Ninth Street and then comes back down and connects to Magnolia beyond the intersection corner. And there's also a ring road that rings around the Central Mall parking lot. And both of these roads are considered private drives that are not owned or maintained by the city, but are part of the planned development district and are owned and maintained by the, the Central Mall Development. The total site is a hundred and thirteen acres and the sites that we're looking at today, the Taco Bell site is a little under thirty-one thousand square feet and the Starbucks site is a little over twenty-four thousand square feet. So if you wanna go to the site plan here, it's, it's a portion of, it's all of tract seven and a portion of tract eight that you see here on this, uh, outlaw plan. If you go to the site plan, John, I think it's four maybe, or, that'll work. It's hard to see with all the lines, but we have a east-west oriented Taco Bell building that has a front door entrance facing Ninth Street and a main entrance that faces the primary parking area to the south of the building. Similarly, the Starbucks site also has an entrance that faces Ninth Street and has an east-west configuration with the primary entrance facing south to the parking that kind of wraps around the west side, the south side and the east side of the building. The Starbucks site has one entrance, which is off of the frontage entrance drive for the Central Mall here to the south. There we go, that helps, John, to the south. And there is a shared access between the two sites, that's twenty-four feet, that connects the Taco Bell and the Starbucks site on the north side of the Starbucks site. And then the Taco Bell site has a frontage access on to the, uh, the Plaza Drive, the Century Plaza Drive road here, as well as the Central Mall frontage or, uh, ring road here on the east side. So that establishes the access. Uh, let's talk about parking real quick, John. The Taco Bell site has forty off-street parking spaces while the... Get my notes here. I believe the Starbucks has twenty-seven parking spaces.
That's right.
And the parking for restaurants is based on a formula of one off-street parking space for every fifty square feet of dining floor area or one parking space for every three seats at your capacity for all, all your seats and chairs and tables that you have within the dining room area. And it's, it's a matter of which one of those is greater. The applicant is going to, I think, share some additional information on this because the plans that we were submitted didn't have a floor plan with a seating plan. It simply had an occupancy load, which sometimes can be a little bit different and so we'll hear from him about that, but the, the numbers that we used came up with a required number of spaces for the Taco Bell being... Twenty-four spaces, so they have sixteen spaces, um, extra and the Starbucks site has a requirement of, let me... Nineteen spaces, so they have an extra eight spaces than what they're required to have. And the reason this is important is because, there's two reasons. One is our regulations for restaurant establishments require that the parking, off-street parking provided by a restaurant cannot exceed twenty-five percent more parking than what is required, which means if you are required to have a hundred off-street parking spaces, you cannot exceed a hundred and twenty-five parking spaces. And in this particular instance, the Taco Bell site has sixty-seven percent more parking than what they're required to have and the Starbucks site has tw- forty-two percent more than what they're required to have. So, and when normally we're dealing with not enough parking, here we're dealing with too much. And as a result of that, it's, it's had some negative impacts on the amount of front yard landscaping that's being proposed on the site plan. The requirement for both of these sites is fifteen square feet of landscaping for every linear foot of street frontage. Now, because of the private roads, we have a street frontage on the west side as well as the east and then the Starbucks site has a third frontage because they're along the entrance road there to the south. So for the Taco Bell site, they're required to have twenty, or two thousand seven hundred and ninety-three square feet and they're proposing two thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine square feet, so they have sufficient landscaping. However, the Starbucks site is proposing three thousand eight hundred and forty square feet when they're required to have four thousand six hundred and fifteen s- square feet of front yard landscaping. So the Starbucks site actually has a deficiency of seven hundred and seventy-five square feet as it, as it currently is being proposed on the plan. Both of the proposed site plans have insufficient tree units. Uh, the, the tree units for the Starbucks site, uh, they're supposed to have nine tree units. Currently they're proposing four, so they have a deficiency of, of five tree units and the Taco Bell site is required to have six tree units and they're currently proposing three, so they have a deficiency of three. That isn't as big of a concern for staff because that can simply be changed by adding trees, but the, the big concern and probably the focus of our discussion today is going to revolve around the front yard landscaping of the Starbucks site. And probably the biggest reason that there's such a deficiency is the main area that you can have your bulk landscaping is along the west edge here and they've only got about a six-foot setback area between the property line and the parking lot curbing. And so that, I think, is establishing a lot of the problems that we're dealing with there. So your role in this particular project is because this is a planned development district, you are to review the final site development plan and look at the site plan, the setbacks, the building elevations, the parking, the access, the drainage, the utilities and the landscaping plan. And I think our primary concern deals with that, that combination of too much parking and not enough landscaping. So we would like to hear from the applicant on why there is so much parking and have them elaborate a little bit on that. And then, second of all, we would approve or recommend approval to, uh, subject to the following revisions being made to the site plan and landscaping plan. And all, I've got them listed here at the bottom of page ten and eleven, but I'll read them quickly. The Starbucks site needs a second handicap accessible parking stall based on the proposed parking that's there on the site now. The Starbucks site also needs to have an additional seven hundred and seventy-five square feet of additional landscaping dispersed evenly along the Century Plaza Drive, the Central Mall Ring Road and the Central Mall Entrance Road to the south of the property. And there also needs to be an additional three tree units provided on the Starbucks site, an additional five tree units, or excuse me, the Taco Bell site, and an additional five tree units proposed on the Starbucks site, as well as some parking lot screening along the east parking of, uh, the Starbucks site. Here's the ring road, that's to the east of the Starbucks site and here are the parking stalls that they have facing east. There needs to be some shrubs or some other type of parking lot screening along that east edge there and that's what that is referring to. The site plan showing the location and type of any exterior lighting fi- fixtures needs to be proposed to us or shown to us for our review, along with any cut sheet elevation showing how the fixtures would cast the light downward not to create light spillage for the roadways or neighboring properties. And then seven and eight are standard conditions that we have on final site plan reviews. So you do have the option to approve the plan that's submitted, disapprove the plan that's submitted, approve it with conditions or postpone action if more information is needed. And staff will take any questions.
Thank you, Dustin. Other questions of Mr. Hurs? Maybe hear it from the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Mays, for, apologize for our long agenda.
I apologize. Jeff Mays, Compro Realty, one fifty-seven South Seventh. Uh, glad to be last on this one, I guess, huh? Just hurry up and get out of here. Uh, the question regarding parking, I did, this all came in late and I did talk to both the Taco Bell users and the Starbucks users. Uh, the Taco Bell site is designed per their minimum standards for approval of the site at forty based on their, this building prototype. Uh, I think we can probably test, trust their professionalism and understanding what their needs are.
So staff asked the question of whether it was need-driven or a function of the utilization of the extra space. So I guess I'm hearing you say their experience teaches them they need...
Says that they need these minimum standards. Uh, in reference to the Taco Bell, I did get confirmation today from them, or excuse me, the Starbucks, that we can give up two of those stalls and still conform with what their minimum standards would be, which will also help us with the landscaping piece that we'll get to in a second. So from a land, from a parking standpoint, uh, while we still would exceed, uh, I believe, and I don't know what those ratio, ratios are, you, you did, Dustin, in regards to if, the Taco Bell's gonna have to remain or it will, the, the deal won't be approved by the Bell, the, the Bell people. The Starbucks fees, we can, we, I've got approval to give up two of those, those spaces for landscaping. How, does, does that satisfy those requirements as you calculate them?
Well, with this being a planned development district, the Planning Commission has some room to approve additional parking beyond what, what typically we, we would allow. I will say this, up on the screen, there's a parking summary because this is not the first time this particular topic has come before the com- commission or city staff and this is a review of some other properties that have either additional parking or even in some cases, less parking than what they typically would need. And I think IHOP is an, an example of a property that has less parking on their site than what they typically would require, but because the Central Mall has so much parking, they've got an agreement where i- if they have an overflow situation, that overflow customers could park just right next door in the, in the main Central Mall parking lot. So I don't know if that would meet any of their, their requirements of Taco Bell or not, but the Planning Commission can certainly, you know, weigh those items.
I'm sorry, Dustin, did you say IHOP? Was that what you referred to? Was it IHOP that...
IHOP, sorry, yes.
Yeah, okay, I, I just wanted to be sure I heard that right.
The prop, and that, that's directly north of the proposed Taco Bell.
Right.
I think what Mr. Hurs is trying to say is it's, the city has certain minimum standards. Many of the franchises have their own standard and their own minimum standard, which in most cases exceeds the city's standard and you can see that in most of these cases, they have been exceeded or allowed to exceed through some mechanism. IHOP is the one exception where they actually didn't have enough and they had to have shared parking with the mall. John, if you could go to the site plan real quick? I just looked at this, um, this afternoon with Dustin, but the...
The primary thing that makes Starbucks different from Taco Bell is this right here, which is not here. And one of the things I suggested was if it was possible, if you were to lose two spaces and you did them right here, that would create a additional front yard landscaping area there that would have some...
That, that is where you would get the most im- visual impact, um, by creating additional green space would be to extend that island there and it would make it continuous and easier to maintain. But that would be up to Mr. Mays and Starbucks to see if that's, that's a potential location. But that seemed to be a simplest thing of moving in, in the direction of enhancing the green space there by enlarging that island and that's primarily the distinction of why Taco Bell has sufficient and Starbucks insufficient is just Taco Bell has that additional deeper space there.
Jeff, could I ask a question? Did you say, did I hear you write that Taco Bell said that anything less than their required would mean that they would not bring that shop here?
Well, in order to get it approved, this is a franchisee that is, that is applying for this right and they, in my conversation with them, they, they said this is designed to their minimum standard and that it wouldn't be approved by Taco Bell. That's coming from the franchisee, I didn't talk to the franchisee. To be clear.
Okay, and on the same subject, I've done my own research. I went to, uh, Taco Bell at, at Iron in Ohio. I have been there when it is a hundred percent full, it only has thirty-six spaces, so they may be on to something. Uh, they may, the only other fast food place I've ever been to in Salina that was completely full was the South Spangles on Ninth Street, it has thirty-nine spaces, so, and it's a comparable sized restaurant, so I think, uh, I think we have to go with what Taco Bell says.
Well, and I, I... We appreciate staff's comments regarding the, the parking stalls there and giving up those two. We also thought that it may help with the egress of the drive-through and maybe keep some traffic conflicts right there with people backing out and having those two movements together. So what we would like to propose is the opportunity to expand that island to address the front, the deficiency in the front yard landscaping and take those two stalls. And if we could get the site plan approved in that form, we would be, we'd be in favor. Uh, some things I do need... Some things I do need to correct that came up also today, and I just wanted to get them on the record for Dean. The building size for the Taco Bell is actually 2,612 square feet. I think it was inappropriately reported by the engineer at 2,558, but I just wanted to make sure that that was clear and didn't become a problem later. They also have 66 seats, and that was due to, again, not having a seating chart, and staff was running projections on that. So just wanted to be clear there. Another change that we're making also to try and address the front yard landscaping in addition to agreeing to give up those two stalls, increase that island depth, we're proposing to move the Starbucks building back six feet and put green space landscaping there as well, which will give us, according to the engineer, another 400 square feet there.
Jeff, what about the trees?
We have no problem with that. The only concern that we have there is if you look out there, this parking screening, the other parcels, the other...
Are you talking about on the east over there?
As you go, if you look at the aerial, I don't know if you have an aerial of the entire thing, Mr. Berger, but, I mean, there's no, if you look at the Chili's and the David's Bridle and whatnot, I mean, there's no green space back there. It's from one parking lot into another. The tree issues is just a miscalculation, again, by the engineer. But the parking area, I don't know that that's, or the parking lot screening, I don't see that as being applied elsewhere, which was a question that we had for staff. And one other item, Dustin, in your notes, in your notes, you mentioned that, and again, in your voicemail that you left, we appreciate your input, if we do give up those two spots, we wouldn't then be required the second handicap, it would just be the called-out handicap?
Right.
Because we have 25 stalls?
Correct. The threshold is 25. Anytime you go over 25 stalls, then the second handicap accessible stall is required.
Excellent.
I wanted to just mention, I did a little bit of my own research, too, and I don't claim to be a perfectly accurate counter, but I went by the IHOP, and they have about, by my count, 40 or nearly that many stalls. And the difficulty perhaps for IHOP is that a lot of them are around in back, so you have to walk some. So it's a little less convenient for people who are going there, but that doesn't seem to stop the customer flow. And the specific, the reason we have it not applicable on here, I assume, for IHOP is because of that overflow in, with the mall parking here. And it really seems to me like that's a very significant thing that we ought to be talking about, and I wondered whether the franchisor knows that, because I think that with that additional parking available, you've already got a lot of asphalt there, and the additional space for parking, if we met, if both franchisors met the city's standards as they are, would allow for really some excellent landscaping, some really, some beautification of that, and would make it look a lot better than David's Bridle, et cetera.
The, we talked about cross-lot access with the mall. They now have agreements in place with some of their larger tenants, not allowing them to enter into those agreements any longer. They're restricting the mall's ability to do that. That was the answer that we got from Garrison.
But as a practical matter, people could still do it.
Yeah. Well, and, right, but when it comes down to approval and going through the franchisor stuff, if it's not in writing, it doesn't exist. I mean, practically, is it gonna happen? Yes, if need be. I think it's personally from, you look at it, you compare an IHOP to an appropriately parked location, I think it's better, it flows better, it's not as difficult to get through, and, I mean, I prefer a better parked concept than the latter, and, you know.
Well, I realize, and as I said, I know there's a little less convenience for the patrons to walk across that road, but still, the looks of the place, I think, would be significantly enhanced, and lord knows, there's plenty of parking there.
Well, but if they can't have the agreement, why it's...
Well, but, well, but what does that mean? I'm not sure. What, they can't have the agreement? If I'm, do I understand right that they're saying that they don't think that the mall...
No, no, no. We pursued it as the buyer of this parcel, we pursued it in our contract with the mall ownership to see if we could get cross-lock parking, just to have, whether we needed it or not, and the mall ownership explained to us that they're restricted from granting that to us by covenant of their other leases.
Jeff, any reason, my only question would be, and again, much smarter people designing stuff than myself, but so you can enlighten me, why, if you pull into Starbucks off of, and take a right to go to their drive-through, how do those, if you're, if there's cars there, how do those guys, why did you elect not to have access out on to, like you did Taco Bell and IHOP has and Chili's has?
The Ring Road.
How do you, why not out on to...
Getting parking on-site.
Where those three spots are? I don't know how you, if that drive-through is as full as like it is in Wichita, I'm not quite sure how you get out of those back four spots if somebody's came in and committed to turn a right, and somebody's trying to back out of those back four spots, and there's the drive-through as full as it is, I don't know how you're gonna get in and out of there.
That, as he mentioned, employee parking is what we've, is what we've talked to Taco Bell about, the utilization that would be for employees.
No, no, I'm talking about Starbucks on the bottom.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. Starbucks.
You're talking about right here.
I'm talking about right in there. Because once you pull in, you commit to the right, you're committed, and you got a car trying to back out with the drive-through.
The movement can be made, which, because we went through that, we ran that exercise with the engineer and with the Starbucks people's engineer as well. So the movement can be made, but again, it's, the idea is that that would be employee parking anyway.
Barista parking.
Jeff, clarify for me, there was, you've mentioned screening, and one of the conditions the city is, it suggests is parking lot screening must be added to Starbucks site plan between Starbucks parking lot and the Central Mall Ring Road. I'm not clear on which, are you in agreement with that or no?
Well, I guess, let me...
He's questioning, which, we cannot question the intent of what the planning commission looked at before. What you can question is the execution in the field and whatever failings on inspection staff in that regard. What Mr. Mays is saying is if you go by Chili's, if you go by David's Bridle, if you go by IHOP, you're not going to find screening on that side. And to be consistent, he doesn't think that screening should be required over here since there is none along there.
There's a question, and it's parking lot screening from frontage, street frontage. There's a question as to whether, is that truly street frontage or is it parking lot frontage? And it, frankly, it works to our benefit a little both ways, but I think that the question is, is that really frontage? The dumpsters are back there, it's the back of the buildings. Is it frontage of the property or not? And that's where, I think, when you see, if you look at the other operators out there, Chili's and David's Bridle, there is no screening there. So really, I think to summarize where we would, what I would put forth for your consideration at this time would be, obviously, we wouldn't need the second handicap parking stall. I think we've gotten through that one condition, the staff recommendation. We would request approval from the planning commission if we added the six-foot of green space in front of the Starbucks, the building, by moving the building back six feet, and expanded that island to the other two stalls per staff's recommendation, if that would be acceptable from a landscape area, front yard landscape area, and then omit the number five, the, what we consider the back of the building, parking lot screening.
So if you were...
Other than that, we'd be agreeable to all of it.
If you were looking at your staff report and on page 11, and the conditions, rather than having condition two there, about the additional 775 square feet of front yard landscaping, condition two would simply indicate that the Starbucks plan would be modified to enlarge the north island abutting Taco Bell and eliminate two parking stalls. That would address item two, then item three and four would stay in what Mr....
And also, also the sliding of the building back, and we would add green space in front of the building as well.
Six-foot additional green space.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna get pretty close, it's gonna be real close anyway, but rather than having to...
Rather than specifying a square footage or amount that we're exercising our judgment here. And item five, Mr. Mays says is inconsistent, and anybody who drives by would see that item five is inconsistent with what has been required. That's not to say if we pulled out IHOP's plan that they didn't have something there at one time that they didn't maintain, but there is nothing there today. So if you were following with that, you would delete item five and modify item two, and then the other. Item one would go away as well because the elimination of two spaces would eliminate the need for a second handicap accessible space. So item, condition two becomes one, and then you have two, three, four, five, and six, and five would go away.
And so we would have items three and four with the trees, that would be met in the additional six feet of space.
Yeah, absolutely. That was just a miscalculation on the site plan. You bet.
Any other questions of Mr. Mays? Will we let the public comment on this item?
Thank you.
Thank you. There being no public comment, I'll bring it back to the commission. Gentlemen, are we ready for a motion on this item?
I'd be very happy to make a motion to bring Starbucks to town, that the...
To Taco Bell?
And Taco Bell, that's correct. But I would make a motion that we approve application PDD 81-4M with the scratch, with the staff recommendation, scratching item number one. Dean, I'm not gonna go through the renumbering thing, because I think that's too tough. And renaming item number two as to, to modify the Starbucks portion to eliminate two stalls and turn that into green space and move the building back six feet and add that as green space, and scratching item number five.
Second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The item carries. Other matters?
We're gonna give you, since you've been punished enough tonight, we're gonna give you the second of April off.
Woo!
So there will be no meeting the April 2nd, and the 16th, we will have a meeting. And on that meeting, the 16th is an expansion of, or proposed expansion of the Quick Shop at Crawford and Centennial, which would be basically the removal of the existing convenience store and construction of a new one, but they were able to acquire some surplus right-of-way on Centennial Road to their west, which allows them to expand their site and expand their facility. And all the applications related to that will come to you on the 16th. We have a final plan for a town home next to the West Star Substation on the north side of Wayne in the Golden Eagle Number Five area. There's two lots there on the north side of Wayne, directly east of the substation, and the planning commission required that final plans for those sites come back for your review, and then we would bring back, hopefully, the site plan and fencing plan and all for the Foxborough site on Schilling Road.
I have a question, too. You know, these are really nice, and these aerial views really help us visualize this foregiving. On some of these, if we could have those in each time, I know they're probably a pain to make or something, but they're a little easier to see than some of those site plans are.
What it requires, it's good for the scanning people. What it requires us to do is that, and you'll see that when you'll get the photographs, it's, it just, it's slightly slower and more cumbersome. Whenever we do include color, and we think color would benefit, we'll, you'll get colored photos and such in the packet. We didn't have this, we knew we were gonna show this at the screen, we didn't have it available till today, so I left it at your places there. The aerial that I had earlier wasn't of a quality that I liked, so we had Keith Ganzamila produce this in-house, and so when we do have that, we'll try to get that in there and try to make it as current as possible, because that really does help you judge by seeing the surroundings.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
And it's a lot better than black and white.
Yep.
So I think that's enough business for this evening, and we'll allow you to adjourn.